All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome. Before we begin the proceedings of our board meeting this evening, I'd like to highlight some safety protocols and our expectations. So we are highly recommending that all attendees wear a mask this evening. Masks are available if you would like one. You can find them on the tables alongside the entrances. Based on the latest guidance and the recent CDC announcement placing Kent County in the substantial risk category for transmission of the COVID-19 Delta variant effective August 17th, 2021, we will be requiring masks indoors for anyone on the grounds of GRPS property for all students, staff, and visitors regardless of your vaccination status. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are located on the tables within the board chambers at both entrances. Once you fill out a comment card, please submit this in the drop box next to the comment cards. Our board assistant will collect those cards when I call for public comment and deliver them to our board secretary, Ms. Lewis. I will call on each individual one at a time to address the board at the presentation table right up here. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Lidrian Roby, and the Board of Education, thank you for being here in attendance with us. Right, with that, I will call this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education to order. Today is Monday, August 16. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lewis, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ross?
President.
Mrs. Williams?
President.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Mathias?
Here.
President Chaki?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. May I please have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. We will move on to our celebrations this evening. Dr. Roby?
Good evening. So we're going to begin with Peace Education Week with Mr. John Helmholt and Katie Valaire. They'll be sharing information about the resolution for Peace Education Week and International Day of Peace. We will be celebrating the Peace Education Week with our community partners, Kate Valaire, and an update related to Mr. Franz.
All right, Dr. Roby, President Chaki, members of the board. Before we begin tonight, we wanted to ask if we could take time for a moment of silence in honor of Michael Franz. As you might recall, Michael's been with us every year for as long as I can remember. Unfortunately, we lost him this last year. And so if we could, could we just take a few 20, 30 seconds for a moment of silence? Michael was really the heart and soul along with Katie and other volunteers. I know we have a few others here, Amanda Bernaz and Ilah Alis with us tonight. But just an opportunity to really say thank you and to honor Mr. Franz and the work that he's done for year after year to support and advocate for this Peace Week. Every year, we've improved upon it, and his advocacy will live on well beyond his life. So I'm going to turn it over to Malonge. Malonge is our social studies curriculum specialist who's done the legwork, working most closely with the team. And so, Malonge, take it over.
Well, thank you, John, for just that. I mean, for sure, it's been an honor to serve with Mr. Franz and Ms. Valaire here over the years. As we talk about the Institute for Global Education and the work of peace education in our district. So before I make some remarks, I want to have Ms. Valaire read a little bit about what this theme for this year is and how that ties into our goal as a district.
The theme for the International Day of Peace this year is recovering better for an equitable and sustainable world. And I'll just read a couple of short paragraphs here. "The pandemic has been accompanied by a surge in stigma, discrimination, and hatred, which only costs more lives instead of saving them. The virus attacks all without caring about where we are or where we're from or what we believe in. Confronting this common enemy of humankind, we must be reminded that we are not each other's enemy. To be able to recover from the devastation of the pandemic, we must make peace with one another. And we must make peace with nature. Despite the travel restrictions and economic shutdowns, climate change is not on pause. What we need is a green and sustainable global economy that produces jobs, reduces emissions, and builds resilience to climate impacts." The 2021 theme for the International Day of Peace is recovering better for an equitable and sustainable world. And we invite you to join the efforts of the world's family, United Nations family, as we focus on recovering better for a more equitable and peaceful world. Celebrate peace by standing up against acts of hate online and offline and by spreading compassion, kindness, and hope in the face of the pandemic as we recover.
So as you hear these words, I mean, I think about these words that jump out to me: equity, inclusivity, sustainability, and healthier. I think, again, think about our goal as a district, the board. Thanks for being really committed to those goals with us and being steadfast in your yearly renewal and resolution for this experience that we have for our students. So we are going to work with Ms. Valaire and the team to really help our students come back stronger, work on conflict resolution in a way that is healthy, that supports social emotional learning in the classroom, and so we can be healthy together as we recover as a community. So thank you for this moment and for the time that you gave into this partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move forward into our public comment time for board agenda items. I know we have many, so I will call up those names individually and welcome you to the board table. Ms. Lewis is going to read some guidelines around public comment to help you prepare.
If there is anyone present who is interested in giving public comment, there are two public comment sections on our agenda. The first one is public comment for board agenda items. And the second opportunity is for commenting on non-agenda items. Please read through our policy listed on the reverse side of the card for the protocol. Please submit your card in the public comment bin, and our board assistant will collect them and bring them to me. Individuals will be called to the speaker's table one at a time to address the board during the subsequent public comment time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will need to state your full name before providing your comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time and provide you with a one-minute notice indicating one minute remains, which is this. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that the three minutes have passed. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the appropriate staff.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I have the other cards, please. Okay. With that, we will begin public comment for agenda items. The first I have here is Alicia Haven. Good evening.
As you know, my name is Alicia Haven. Hello to Superintendent Roby and the board. Since 2:00 p.m. today, I have heard one word over and over and over again, and that word is relief. I've heard it from our families, and I've heard it from families in other districts. They really appreciate your leadership in stepping up and taking this stance on masks. They're really hoping that their districts follow suit and do a mandate as well. My family and I passionately believe that sustained mitigation standards during an ongoing pandemic is an obligation for the safety and welfare of all, but especially our children. Last school year, we supported and appreciated the steps you all took early on to mitigate and to keep the welfare of our students and staff a priority. Those steps were a success. Often, the right and most challenging decisions go unappreciated. Know that we wholeheartedly appreciated those actions that you took. Now, as our district focuses on 100% in-person learning this year, GRPS must continue all layers of in-person mitigation, the Swiss cheese model as it's often called, and need our schools to toe the line on all of those fronts. We know there are those who do not and will not understand or support decisions made by GRPS. But as always, GRPS must stand for and act on behalf of the well-being of all students. To be equitable in education is to ensure that all students can participate and learn in the learning environment. Without mandated mitigation, students who are medically vulnerable, those with medically vulnerable family members, and all children under 12 are at a greater risk. This risk will not change until well after a vaccine is available for our youngest. Know that we stand with you on hard decisions and that are right for our community, and there are more to make. One, 100% in-person means an increase in volume in school from last year, and unadjusted and insufficient standards for lunchtime occur right now. Greater social distancing and outdoor options must be enacted in every school. As you know, vaccines are the number-one mitigation. So two, to reduce the stress and anxiety of our community, GRPS's mandated COVID mitigations and policies must be sustained until well after vaccinations are available for all and had plenty of time to be administered and take effect. Anything less reduces confidence for our families in the safety of their school environment decision. We want them to be confident that GRPS is the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome forward Kelly Hune. Kelly? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roby, Ms. Chaki. I want to share my appreciation for the very difficult decision that you made to require universal masking. I know there's been a lot of political pressure, including a letter received by Dr. Adam Landon, our county health commissioner, where four state representatives threatened, quote, "the power of the purse" if he did not acquiesce to their demands of not mandating masking. So again, thank you for putting the health and safety of our students and their families first.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, I'd like to welcome forward Jill Sobel Walsh. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Roby and board members. Thank you for having us. I had prepared a really spiffy two-minute speech, but I have to start by saying thank you. I'm gratefully from the bottom of our hearts for mandating masks in school. I am so proud to be a GRPS family. And I've got family throughout the state whose school boards are not listening to families who are terrified to send their kids back to school. And it feels so good to know that I have chosen a quality public school education for my children and that others in our community are also going to receive that same equitable education in a safe environment. So I would just, again, like to say thank you so much. I don't know if we show appreciation enough for our educators and for you, but we are very grateful. I've got two children. They are in the Ridgemore Park Montessori School. They are in second and third grade, two beautiful little girls, two bright, beautiful little girls that I'm really excited to send back to school. And they are really excited to be able to go back, too. And my little one said today, "Mommy, I'm going to wear my mask and use my hand sanitizer. We're going to go back to real school, right?" And I said, "Yeah, we're going back." So I just want to encourage you to take advantage of the state and federal protections that are offered for taking steps for the rest of the mitigation strategies, social distancing at lunchtime, air exchange flow, daily COVID screening, testing, and contact tracing. And please also continue to review even after the vaccine is approved for our children because we know that there are those that are vulnerable in our society. That's what we're here for, is to protect them. And we're going to need to continue masking to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, I'd like to welcome forward Ben Braun. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President Chaki, Dr. Roby, and members of the school board. My name is Ben Braun, and I am here today to thank you. Thank you for continuing to be dedicated to the education and safety of our kids and our community. Thank you for continuing to rely on our public health professionals to inform your strategies to keep kids in the classroom. If our goal, our shared goal, is to have kids in school for face-to-face learning with their peers with minimal disruptions from COVID, this is the way. Thank you for continuing to be flexible and responsive to changing circumstances. We are all in this together, and we all depend on each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, I'd like to welcome forward Lisa Lentvanderzouwen. Good evening, welcome.
My name is Lisa Lentvanderzouwen. I am the mother of two GRPS elementary students. I first would like to thank you for your recent decision to require masks be worn by all people in all of your school buildings. I know this was probably not an easy decision to implement, but I'm thankful you are taking this matter seriously. I'm also here to ask you to reinstate all of the mitigation strategies you had in place during the last school year. We know that mask-wearing, along with physical distancing, especially in the lunchroom, daily COVID screenings, testing and contact tracing, all add up to the best form of prevention. I'm sure we can all agree that we want our children to remain in school in person with as little disruption as possible. I would also like to request that the mask mandate not be reviewed until after the under-12 population has a chance to be fully vaccinated. There were no school-wide outbreaks at GRPS last year, so we know your strategies worked. Please work toward reinstating them so our children in schools can have a successful year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rachel Hendricks, I'm going to invite you forward if you like. I know you said "non-agenda," but it might be... Yeah, sure. No problem. Welcome forward. All right, good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I will confirm my name is Rachel Hendricks. Thank you for this chance to speak. I was planning on coming tonight anyway to thank you for the detailed COVID-19 plan that you sent to parents earlier this month. And I do still thank you for communicating. But I'm concerned about the school's decision to mandate masks even though the Kent County Health Department decided not to. Does the school have secret knowledge that the Health Department doesn't? Or did they just get more complaints? Which means the latest update reflects politics, not education. A mask mandate is a one-size-fits-all approach, but each student and family situation is unique. GRPS hopefully learned this last year when the virtual program didn't work for everybody. The parents who want a mandate say it will protect all kids' health, but they ignore the needs of kids who have health problems with masks. They say it will increase access to in-person education, but the kids who have communication difficulties from mask-wearing will fall behind. It seems like the push for a mandate is based on the assumption that having choices means everyone will choose not to wear one. But there are families where mask-wearing is the right choice for some, but not for others. Since school hasn't even started, the data isn't available for their worst-case scenario. People have even said that healthcare workers wear masks all day, and that shows they are safe and effective. Well, they are adults who are trained in infection control and work in a sterile environment. All that evidence would change if they were replaced with kindergarteners. Some have proposed that children only wear masks until a vaccine is available, but there's no information to set a timeline. What if there's a new variant by then, and the vaccine isn't effective? If people want asymptomatic kids to wear masks indefinitely, they should be honest about that, and so should GRPS. Listing a future date to reevaluate just seems like an effort to avoid negative feedback. Since we can't predict the future, wouldn't it be better to start out with a good long-term plan, such as parents choosing what's best for their students? If the city experiences significant healthcare challenges, then the Health Department should step in. I'll end with GRPS's mission statement. Our mission is to ensure that all students are educated, safe, and healthy members of society. If GRPS doesn't prioritize education over politics, then it doesn't have a purpose.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, welcome forward Mark. Is it Van Kilt? Excuse me if I said that wrong. Okay, good evening, welcome.
My name is Mark Van Kijk. I have a child going to school here this year. It was my intent that he would be able to attend a normal school year without a mask. He had to do preschool last year, and he lost a lot of valuable nonverbal communication skills because of wearing the mask. There are...I know it's a very heated argument on both sides, the science is on both sides, and it's still a science, which does not mean truth. It means searching for truth. We have a scientific method that we use, and there's arguments on both sides for and against. During this whole pandemic, there's been little talk about grandma's old cure is plenty of rest, reduce your stress, eat well, and take care of yourselves. But all this prevention stuff with the masks and stuff, the science is just not there either way. So we should help our kids because their 99-point-X percent risk of dying is very, very low. I think we should, if masks are mandated, an online option should be available for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll welcome forward Alex Johnson. I know you said "not on the agenda item" or "on the agenda," but yeah, welcome forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name's Alex Johnson, as you mentioned, and really didn't know which way it was going to go. So I had prepared something other than what I expected. And beforehand, I just wanted to get to know each of you a little bit. So I spent some of my time looking over your bios to get a sense of sort of your backgrounds and how you've spent some of your life and what you value. And so I just wanted to let you know that. And I also wanted to say that I was so impressed last year with the school year, especially with you, Dr. Roby, coming in as your first year here in Grand Rapids, representing a school district of 15,000 students. And that's enough of an undertaking on its own. And then to have this thrown on top of you and the way that you and your team and the district sort of responded to that was inspiring. And so I appreciated your leadership as well as the school boards and the districts last year. Your leadership as a whole was bar none. And so this year, with, you know, the unknowns, I again am impressed with your leadership as a group, as a team, as a district, to follow the data, at least what we have. And I know the gentleman suggested that there's science on both sides, which is true, and for one study, there's always another study. And it just sort of, that's just the nature of it. I think at this point, I haven't done all of my research, but I don't believe anyone has died from wearing a mask. And with that being the case, it is hard to dispute that wearing masks doesn't work. We have lost 600,000-plus citizens or people in the United States. That is an astronomical number. And on top of that, it's just a reminder of how connected we are across the globe. This started in one part of the world, and it's just dispersed and taken over. The Delta variant was in India. A month later, it's just all over the United States. And so while we're going back and forth, and someone mentioned politics, even though it wasn't brought up by the board here, we have to remember how connected we are on the most basic level. And I think the responsibility of a public institution because of the fact that it has a ripple effect and we're so connected, that the decision that you made, fully support. You've got four huge fans in our household. We believe in you, we appreciate you, and we'll continue to support you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. So this afternoon, I had to rewrite my speech around 2:00 o'clock when I received the email from Dr. Roby. My name's Alexa Adi. I can't even begin to express my little disappointment that you gave in to peer pressure and bullying. This choice should be up to the parents regarding masking. Experts are recommending masking, but they haven't placed any orders or laws requiring them. And since you've been stating since the beginning that you're following all these guidelines, what's the change now? It's substantial risk now, but what does it have to be for the parents to choose? I would like to have a matrix made from GRPS with what the quantitative decision process is. If it's this, if it's that, how is this going to work? There was all sorts of flip-flopping last year, which is understandable, but we'd like to know more as parents. We are 511 days into flattening the curve so as not to overwhelm the hospitals. That's 511 days. The hospitals aren't overwhelmed. The Tiger game at Comerica Park this weekend had 35,000 people at it. La Palooza in Chicago had over 100,000 people in it each day, and they're saying that there was not a big outbreak from that. The Woodward Dream Cruise in Detroit is happening. Obama had over 200 people at his birthday party. This is all sending a huge mixed message to our children. My fourth grader had a class last spring about body autonomy and consent. And now we're telling him that he has to wear this super gross, disgusting face covering on him against his will? Not okay. All right, so the current stats for the CDC. 52,672 people, not people, children have died since this started. 354 of them were from COVID, and that is sad. But more children have died from suicide, drowning, and car accidents during that time. Are we having them wear life jackets? What are we doing about transportation? The PCR test that the CDC is using is unreliable, and they're recalling it. The Delta variant is only confirmed by a gene sequencing test that they're only sending some of those tests to the labs to get done, and no one knows who actually has it. The kids are not affected by this virus in the manner that adults are. They are affected by wearing gross, wet, bacteria-filled masks on their faces all day. And then you add in the poor ventilation and no air conditioning that so many of the GRPS schools lack. I'm just livid with this. I want the GRPS school board to produce the scientific studies and data that they are following to make sure that the kids are safe in their schools. I would also like links on the GRPS website ASAP for medical and religious exemptions for the students.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll welcome forward Elizabeth van Clompenberg. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you for having public comment tonight. Dr. Roby and the members of the school board, my name is Elizabeth van Clompenberg, and I'm a GRPS parent. Next week, my son will walk through the doors of North Park Montessori for the first day of second grade. He is brilliant, he is funny, and he does not mind wearing a mask to protect his classmates, all of whom have no access to the protection of the COVID-19 vaccine. I stand before you, or sit before you, with gratitude for and in support of the mask mandate that you have issued for our schools. I support the mask mandate and all other evidence-based COVID-19 mitigation measures. There are not two sides to this issue that merit equal consideration. The jury is not out. The data and all experts... The data and all experts, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, MDHJS, the Michigan Association of Family Physicians, and the Michigan chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, support universal masking as a critical COVID-19 mitigation strategy. As we watch what's occurring across the southern states in schools, I very much appreciate this measure will be taken in our schools. It's important that we do not engage in magical thinking about COVID-19. The reality is, is that the Delta variant, a highly transmissible airborne virus, is circulating in our community and will affect anyone and everyone it can, given the opportunity. Our responsibility as a community is to put in place every feasible strategy to prevent transmission. Scientists and physicians have implored us to make mask-wearing mandatory in our schools. This is because masks work best when everyone in the same room is wearing one. It's our best hope to minimize potentially severe illness in our unvaccinated kids and disruptions to in-person learning. Thank you for taking the only right path here. I appreciate that as an institution of education, you will set and enforce this firm requirement that anyone who sets foot in a GRPS building must wear a mask to protect our kids. I expect that universal masking, among other successful mitigation strategies that were successful in the last school year, will continue until community spread is low and children under 12 can be vaccinated. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to welcome forward Anthony Ochoa. Good evening.
Hi. I'm, don't have anything prepared, and everyone said it well before me. I have a immunocompromised daughter with several medical complications and histories and specialists who have continued to affirm and advocate the isolation that we've had sustained through the pandemic. Sorry, hold on, okay.
Yeah, you're doing great.
Because of, because of her health, without going too far into her personal medical history, but it's, she's a person and, and there is, there is speculation from the data that her specialist, her ENT specialist have said that she would not do well and at continued risk of more harmful complications and death than of my four-year-old who's going to be starting her first year of in-person learning. Sorry, wow. Okay, okay. I'm gonna try to get all my thoughts out there. She, she has Down syndrome. She does well with a mask, but she, she likes to explore it, and it does get wet, but she has been the healthiest that she has been the past year, just with isolation and mask-wearing and being so proactive with sanitization and all these other steps that we've taken. And our concern was that without the mask mandate, even if she's wearing a mask, her fidgeting with it and that, what does that mean when she comes into close contact with those around her who wouldn't be, wouldn't have it on as well? And so I'm sorry, I don't know if any of these thoughts are, are out and can be understood well, but because of the mandate, we believe that she can continue to be safe from this real threat that is happening in our communities. And everything that they've said about the steps you've taken to protect those who are in most at risk is, is my daughter. It's the four-year-old that helps. And so, so yeah. I don't know if what I said made sense, but, but yeah, thank, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, all right. And the last comment card I have is Amanda Bernays.
I can't say that I have any children in the school district right now, but I am, I went to Grand Rapids Public School my entire life, K through 12, and I'm very happy to have done so. I've, I've gone on to school to become, to, to have a master's degree. And listening to some of these comments, it's just, it's, it's, I can understand why he's emotional, I'm emotional just listening to it. I mean, people are talking about discomfort and the grossness of masks versus people's deaths, children's deaths. I mean, I don't even know why we're even entertain, I, I understand that you have to entertain these, and I, and I thank you for that. And on the other hand, I just don't know why we're, can we move this discussion from what we know that we should do with, given the reality, the history of what we dealt with last year, the facts, and move from that into how we can work on talking about the best ways to continue to teach children through the pandemic? Instead of discussing mask use continuously, over and over and over again? I mean, I understand that we need to do it, but we have a responsibility to our children to protect them, to ensure that they can continue to go to school again, so that they can continue to live. Look, why are we talking about masks? There are so many immunocompromised people that are in the city who are not here, not able to represent themselves, perhaps not able to come into this office on this particular day to be able to tell you that. And people don't, aren't even aware of their immunocompromised situations. I mean, people who are completely, you know, just because they haven't gotten sick yet doesn't mean that they won't. You know, I don't know how many people I've known throughout my lifetime that say, oh, I've not had allergies. Well, that's actually an immunocompromised situation. And then they say, oh, but then I got them at some point. Well, okay, that's good to know. And at some point, you could also get extremely sick, and we never, we never know when that's going to happen. So it's just, it's disheartening to hear that we're discussing this when we should be talking about setting the example to prevent horrible deaths in our, in our community. And some of these assumptions that were made, that is, the kindergartners can't learn to wear masks as healthcare professionals have. So are we not teaching them? Is that not our goal? Like, we don't want to teach them behavioral changes or, you know, an education of any sort. Right, no, we can't, you know, I'm sorry, just some of the comments were just astounding about discomfort and grossness versus a life and a future, and protecting who we know we need to protect with people who are immunocompromised. And if you, you know, I, I saw the mission that she, that she read off. The mission is to ensure that students are educated, self-directed, and productive members of society. Well, how are we going to ensure that if they're not alive?
Thank you very much. Okay. Forgive me, a few more cards, all right. Let's see, I'd like to welcome forward Orland Lehman. Orland, welcome.
I'm a former Grand Rapids Public School, high school teacher from late 60s, early 70s. I'm bringing up two questions. The first one is, I wanted to make sure that the board, in their policy, has no policy to cause transgender males to go into women's bathrooms. It's not fair to the women in their sports. And that's the only thing I'm going to say about that. The other thing is about critical race theory. It seems it's focused on rebranding Marxism in the schools. The core idea behind that is not equal opportunity. It's just Guttmark and Luther King's dream, we're not to be judged by the color of skin, but by the content of character. And the goal of the CRT is to delegitimize equal opportunity, to reduce us to black and white and incite race warfare. America is about individual equality, not group equality. We're not to be defined by the color of our skin, but as individuals. We have a constitution that recognizes individuality, gives us paths to success. It's not the government's job, but it's to get governed out of our way. We have individual rights.
One minute.
CRT is itself racist. It suggests black and white citizens with equal education and employment, similar outcomes. The principle of merit-based achievement is rejected. It's easier to hate and to blame than to love and respect. So I want to ensure that the Grand Rapids Public Schools does not teach CRT.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I do want to apologize that those items are not on the agenda, to be clear this evening. I misread the agenda item, but thank you for your public comment. All right, I'd like to welcome forward Mary Bowens. Good evening, welcome.
Hi. Hello. Mary Bowens, GREA president. Greetings Superintendent Roby, President Shakke, and Board of Education. I had to rewrite what I was going to say today, and so I, I wanted to come up here and maybe end the comments with, with what I've, what I've written. I want to thank you from the GRPS students who are medically fragile and easily susceptible to respiratory illness. I want to thank you from the Grand Rapids Public Schools families who are not vaccinated. I want to thank you from last year's virtual teachers, who were virtual because they had necessary medical accommodations. I want to thank you from a vaccinated high school teacher who wanted to be here tonight to speak about requiring masks, but was unable to attend because she and her eight-year-old son tested positive for COVID. I wanted to thank you from another vaccinated teacher who's also quarantining with her daughter after testing positive. I want to thank you from the educators who were reluctant to spend any extra time in the school buildings after spending seven hours with 30 unmasked and unvaccinated children. I wanted to thank you for eliminating the need for educators to be put in the middle of a, of the policing of who is to be masked and who is not, based on parent choice. They should be teaching, not monitoring peer pressure and compliance with parents' wishes. It allows for more education to happen. I want to thank you for considering that class sizes are back to their regular numbers and social distancing is not possible. I wanted to thank you for considering the air exchange reports that have the maximum number of bodies that can safely be present in a classroom. Many classroom, classes already exceed those safety measures. And I wanted finally to thank you from the immune compromise, the high-risk pregnancies, the asthmatics, those with chronic respiratory illness, the people with older parents, and the parents with unvaccinated children. Thank you for working toward keeping us all safe and healthy. And for those who disagree with masking, there's a quote that is attributed to Dr. Fauci, but I found it's a young adult author named Lauren Morell. She said, "I don't know how to explain to you that you should care for other people." Thank you for doing that and caring for our kids and our community.
Thank you. All right, just want to say thank you again to everyone who came out this evening. We really do appreciate your engagement and advocacy in the school district. We're going to move forward on our agenda, and the next item is our secretary's report. Ms. Lewis.
Very short and sweet. All I have to do is remind the finance committee that there is a meeting on Monday, August 23rd, at 5:30 PM here in the auditorium.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, we have our committee chair updates, just one this evening, Ms. Davis with the Academic Achievement Committee. Ms. Davis?
Yes, we met as a committee on the 4th of August. We started with an instructional council update, as we always do. An exciting updated class called Latin American History is scheduled for this fall for eighth grade at Southwest High School. And it's been updated, a new textbook was added in Spanish. It has history and language, and it helps prepare the students for ninth, a ninth-grade AP course. So they were very excited about that, the presentation of that course. We also had a presentation on Schoology, which was piloted last year and will be used in more buildings this year. And basically, it, it has a platform for teachers, students, and parents. Students can go in there, it has courses and groups, resources. It shows them which assignments are overdue, reminds them of assignments coming up, and has a calendar. They have an icon for each course that they are enrolled in, that they can easily click on. The parent view and the teacher view looks similar to the students'. One thing that stood out to me was that teachers can actually go in there, click on a student, and see what other tests and assignments they have due that week, so they, they could strategically plan assignments around the workload that the students have. This is, Schoology is a tiered rollout, so there's lots of possibilities moving forward. And one of those that was mentioned was the possibility for there to be parent courses and groups on the platform. And just one last note I have on here that I wanted to share is that parents will, parents have an access code for each student that's enrolled in GRPS, but once they put those access codes in, it, they just have one page that manages all of their students that they can go to, so easy access. We also had just an update on the Ottawa Hills Academies, and two academies were put on pause last year with everything going on, but they are going to start this year. We have media production and public safety services. So first semester, both of those academies will start with a customer service class, and then media production has graphic design the first year, and public safety services has intro to public safety services. So we just started, we just had an update on that, but we also talked about maybe revisiting the academies as a full board, since it has kind of been put aside for a while, so we can have more of an update moving forward. And then we just had a very brief update on the Summer of Success. We had 2,653 students that took part in that, from June 21st to July 22nd, and we had at least 24 students graduate because of that. But that was at our meeting on the 4th, and there might be even more as of now. But we will have a more formal report about Summer of Success around December, when we have all of the data collected. Anything else from my teammates? Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Ms. Davis. We'll move on to our superintendents' reports.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to begin thanking, a huge thank you to the Grand Rapids community for supporting and voting in favor of the non-Homestead Millage. The Millage passed at 70% voter approval. Our community supports our children, and they support our staff and our schools. And so I need to say, we thank you for that. Return to Learn updates. We have begun staff training with the opening of schools. Online, you should be able to find the 2122 academic plan. It'll be available on the district website soon. This is about how we approach our work, curricular instruction, backwards mapping, extended learning opportunities, learning management systems, SEL, which is social-emotional learning, as well as special education support. And then also, I want to make sure that, again, we address the masking update. I want to publicly acknowledge our community. This has been challenging for everyone. I know that people's patience and kindness has been stressed and, and strained. As we begin the 2122 school year, things are going to ebb and flow. It's never our intent, it's never our intent to cause confusion. It's never our intent, it's never our intent to cause confusion. But if you reflect on the things that we've experienced over the last 18 to 20 months, it has ebbed and flowed. I am asking all of us as adults to be in the headspace that changes do happen. We are coming back to school. It's not going to look like it has in the past, and it will continue to change. I am committed, we are committed to sharing communications about what's taking place. And at present, we have shared a communication around universal masking for all students, staff, and visitors while on our school grounds that will begin effective tomorrow. And this is not a decision that was taken lightly. And I know that people are in various stages of where their beliefs are, but we are trying to use verified and credible information and stay out of the emotions of it. We want to use information so that we're making decisions for children. We are doing this for our students, our staff, and our community. And we have been placed in an untenable situation. This has not been easy, and I want to acknowledge that I understand and respect that people are in different places. It's about getting kids back in school. And I will close my comments related to that.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Robey. I've been reflecting on a phrase I heard back at the beginning of the year, where someone said, "I will make a decision, and if I need to make a new decision, we can make a new decision." And that certainly has been, I think, the cadence of what we've seen over this last year and even in the last few weeks. So I just want to recognize you and the administrative team for managing what is a constantly moving and fluid situation. So I know firsthand how complex this discernment has been. I just want to thank you for your leadership. I'm definitely in support of a conservative approach these first few weeks, as we are about to have a lot of information and data about opening schools across the country that we can lean on as we prepare to make new decisions and more decisions from the year to come. Our goal really is to manage disruption, and our kids have had a really disruptive year. And so anything that we can do as this Board of Education, who are entrusted with your children, to ensure that they get to go to school, stay in school, and learn, and succeed, is what matters to us most. So I just want to thank all of you and the many parents and stakeholders who couldn't be here tonight, who have reached out. I wish we could respond to the volume of emails we receive, but please know, please know, they really are read, and we hear you, and they will continue to be read, and we will continue to hear you. So we do so appreciate the advocacy and support from all of you. I just want to give any other board members who'd like to say anything about this a moment, and then we'll move on with our other reports.
About the masking in particular? Yeah, I think, you know, I definitely appreciate everyone's, I guess, passion to offer the voice on, you know, what they believe is the right thing. But I think it's important, and the reality is that there's no foolproof right thing, to be honest. I think when in doubt, the rightest thing is the safest thing. And I guess as someone alluded to, science may be saying a couple of things on both sides, but I'd be hard-pressed to be convinced that mask-wearing isn't the safest thing. And as you said, the least disruptive thing for our school buildings. I think it's the best thing for education purposes. And I do clearly think it's the best thing for life and death purposes as well. Is it an ideal thing? No, not at all. I don't like wearing it either, but, so no, I guess I just want to also support the decision to move in this direction and clearly state that I personally have zero wavering with this particular decision myself. And it just does clearly seem like the right thing for most people, but unfortunately, like a lot of things, things are not always right for all people. But if anyone has a solution to do what's right for all people and make everybody happy, I'd be the first to stand in line and hear that, for sure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Anyone else? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I just, you know, throughout this whole last year, and the Board is a part of these decisions, but the administration has done the hard work and has put themselves really in the crosshairs many times. And I've been very happy about the responsiveness of this group, and I really think that of us as a whole, but certainly the administration's responsiveness to the multiple and the work that they've done to gather the multiple sources of information. And I feel like the process is always messy, because the problem is messy, but the decisions have been the right decisions all along, and I really appreciate that. You know, as I walked in with Mr. Ross today, I was kind of bracing myself, so, but as you guys were talking today, I kind of rewrote what I wanted to say, too. You know, when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, the first word after God every time we say it is indivisible. And I have really felt this divisiveness that we've had, and I felt that tonight, despite the differences of opinion, that we were indivisible and that we were all trying to work towards the children. I've been concerned about the communications that we have received from both sides that were very hurtful and insulting. If Alex looked at our bios earlier today, he would have seen that everybody up here in their evening job, their day job, and in their personal lives do work to help children learn and live and thrive. And to be charged with not caring about children is insulting, and it doesn't mean that we're always right, and I just think it's really fair. Comments that were made calling the superintendent, Mr. Helmuth, liars, was just uncalled for and did not really reflect the amount of work that these people have done to make the right decisions. And we all work very hard, and we are all just trying to get through this crisis with children breathing and thriving and learning. And so that's, I have a lot of stuff, obviously, we've all spent a lot of time, but I really appreciate where we've come and how we got here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. I'm one of the few board members that differed with my colleagues in terms of the mandate. I would have preferred that the community have a chance to choose graciously, thinking of others. We do better when we put others first, because typically, we think of ourselves in that process. I hope that we will be gracious as a community and certainly as a district. I hope that we don't teach our kids how to divide, you know, or polarize, but rather, put yourself in that person's shoes and think about it, and then make that choice. You know what? Wearing the mask isn't that bad when I think that I'm able to help someone else. I don't particularly feel like I need to wear the mask, but I will wear it because I'm concerned about my fellow colleagues as well as our community. And so I hope that as we step forward, that we will take this as a teachable moment to help our kids to be gracious to each other, as opposed to pointing the finger and saying, "You're this," or "You're that," but rather, as adults, teaching our children how to be gracious, especially in times like these. So thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just follow Reverend Mathias, because your comments were right on track with my train of thought, which is for us to grant each other some grace. Ultimately, we as individuals and as a board collectively, we are trying to act in the best interest of our students first, as well as the community of teachers, educators, staff, people that also work with your children and our children. And so if we grant each other some grace in this process, we can make it through. But if we are always ready to point the finger, if we're always ready to take a defensive stance, then we come through this and we cause more harm in the process. So I'm going to ask that the community grant us some grace as we try to do our best work.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, we'll move forward. So the next item is the back-to-school safety update.
So Mr. Larry Johnson, I'm going to ask him to come forward. He is going to give an overview of some safety precautions and things that we have planned for the opening of the 2122 school year.
Good evening, President Shaki, Superintendent Robey, and the other distinguished board members. Just very briefly, as we just, about a week out from the opening of school, just want to give you an update on where we are as it relates to safety and security, safe health and security. We have absolutely implemented our ZPass, and here comes the bus once again this year that would help our parents track their students as they ride buses to and from school. It was an app that we worked with Dean's last year to put in place and found it to be very effective in helping our parents find out what bus their kids were on, if those buses were running late. Dean's has continued to experience the hiring of drivers. We believe that they have an adequate number of drivers to start the school year, but that's always a work in progress as it relates to getting drivers on the bus. As it relates to the back-to-school for our young people, we just want to remind our parents, our drivers, that in less than a week, our kids will be on the street, and they will be excited to return to school. And so we just want them to slow down, slow down, and really pay attention to the red flashing lights on the bus, as well as kids who may be excited and running in between cars. So if we can slow it down a little bit, it's just the interest of all of our young people returning to school. This has been a challenging summer. It was great to open up 22 buildings in our Summer of Success, but initially, we only opened about six buildings. So in opening 20 buildings, it takes us a little longer to get buildings prepped and ready for the school year. But this week, I'm happy to say that we're down to three buildings that need to be still touched up. We are listening to our staff, our parents of buildings that we need to go back in. We really want to thank Mary Bowens, who has worked very well with us in keeping us in the loop when there have been some challenges or concerns from staff, and she's gotten that information to us, and we've tried to react to that very quickly. Our five secured entryways are wrapping up at Kennel Shea, Mulick, North Park, Shawmit, and Congress. And so as part of the previous bond, we have, we've come into a close of providing secured entryways and renovated offices for that purposes, for that purpose for many of our families. And so we're looking forward to finalizing and finishing up the project at Union High School. And as relates, we're going into the final phase of that project, and, but the students and staff will return to a newly renovated three-quarters of the building that looks very, very well, and we're working hard to get that cleaned and prepped and ready to go. And then, and then finally, we'll continue to do our daily walkthroughs, our daily check-ins with law enforcement, all those individuals who's concerned about kids' safety, as well as our parents, our parent groups from our bus teams that keep us in the loop when they have concerns about kids' safety. And we will be very responsive to those concerns as they come in to us to help keep our kids safe. If you have any questions about the health and safety and opening of school, we'll entertain that now. If not, thank you for your time. Haven't seen any hands, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If I can ask Mr. Helmuth to come forward, he's going to give an update related to our strategic planning process.
Dr. Robey, thank you very much. So the strategic planning process, we are essentially wrapping up Phase One. You might recall, this is a three-phase, very iterative process, one that we're working very closely with community partners to further develop the community engagement process. So the first analysis was those focus groups. More than 250 individuals participated in nearly three dozen focus groups. There was a survey that was done. All that data is being synthesized now to develop a framework, a strategic plan framework that will then be presented at a September 14th design session with more than 100 individuals who will be invited to participate, stakeholders, internal, external, from the focus groups, from community partners. That information, that will be a half-day session from 8:30 until noon. Shortly thereafter, around that same time, there will also be a training session where we will be doing a Train the Trainer model with Martha Greenway from Greenway Strategy Group. This is to take that community engagement to a whole new level. And as you might recall, I referenced our community partners. Thanks to the financial support and advocacy of the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, they're working with Urban Core Collective and other community stakeholders to serve as kind of external accountability partners with the district. These third-party observers and thought partners have been working with us from the very get-go. They're going to continue to work with us, and they're going to play a role in helping to recruit and help to train individuals to go out into the community, to reach the hard-to-reach populations, whether it's in the kitchen, it's in the backyard, it's at church, anywhere we can connect with individuals who might not otherwise normally engage in a strategic planning process. That is the intent of this partnership. And so the team has already been providing Greenway a community perspective of the larger context. They're also providing input on this community feedback. In the future stages, the accountability partners will provide insight into the analysis of the data, so they're right there alongside us, diving deep into the same data. You're going to see it, they're seeing it, the community will see it. In conjunction with what your vision was, this will be a transparent, open, accountable, and inclusive, equitably-inclusive process. We're going to continue that. We're still just getting done with Phase One. We're going to shift to Phase Two here pretty quick. Dr. Robey, would you like me to continue with the crosstown throwdown?
Yes, and Mr. Johnson, will you come up, too, just in case? We are excited about the crosstown homecoming throwdown event taking place in about a week and a half.
And I apologize, I didn't ask if there are any questions or comments on the strategic plan. Hearing none. Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here. Kirk can get into some of the specifics. As you know, we are, this is our 150th anniversary, and we are looking at a series of different events and activities, but the one big event that has typically had a theme associated with it is our crosstown throwdown football game between Union and Ottawa Hills. This year, it's the theme of 150th anniversary and the first-ever citywide alumni reunion. Tickets for this event are free, but because of the demand, because of what we expect will be a sellout crowd, we're asking for preregistration. There's an online link that's on our website at GRPS.org. It's also on the foundation's website at GRPSF, as in Frank, dot org. It's quick and easy to preregister. If you want to make a donation, there's an opportunity to make a donation, because this is also a fundraiser, so there are sponsorship opportunities. I know I put a challenge out to the Class of '93 at Union High to join me, so we're looking to get our own banner. Anyone that's listening, if you're part of GRPS, your alumni staff, pool your resources. Let's spread these banners throughout the entire stadium. We're already fortunate to have received nearly $50,000 in donations to point, and so we're excited about it. And then, of course, this is, there's fun activities and other details that I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson and have him dive in.
I was just going to say ditto. So good evening, President Shaki, Superintendent Robey, and other distinguished board members. And so like John was saying, you know, this is the first student activity of the school year, so it really kind of kicks off and symbolizes that we're back in school. And so again, it's a crosstown rivalry, Ottawa versus Union, we have every year, but this year, it does incorporate the theme. We're expecting to do some special presentations for halftime that will engage the stand and, excuse me, the audience and our reunion classes. And so you'll see a lot of extra activity on the observation decks and a lot of promotion around back-to-school messaging and some Grand Rapids history, public schools trivia. So it'll be a lot, it'll be an action-packed day. We're expecting, you know, we gather a pretty robust crowd on our own with our, within the district, and so we're adding a lot of invitations to the class reunions, and we're expecting to have special sections, special acknowledgements there. So it'd be really fun, and we're all looking forward to it.
Just would note that while we are encouraging preregistration via online, individuals can also go to the schools, to the athletic offices, and secure tickets that way. And there will be some limited tickets at the door based on how many seats are available. But again, if you want to save your seat, get online, preregister, or go visit the high school athletic office and get your tickets.
Ditto.
Thank you so much.
Quick question, are we tailgating?
Yes.
There are opportunities to tailgate.
We had a great time last year.
Yeah, there are opportunities. Those begin at 4 o'clock, and so on each side, the home side or the wayside, there's a designated space. So if you're on the Union side, it's near the playground there, and if you're on the wayside, it's near the green space. So it'll be clearly marked there. And so, yep, come on out early, tailgate, socialize, and mingle with your classmates and this sort of thing, and so it'll be a lot of fun. Hope to see you all there.
Do you want to have the polar bears represented?
Go Bears!
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, great. We have just a few action items this evening. The first is our resolution for Peace Education Week. May I please have a motion for approval of this resolution?
So moved.
Support. Ms. Lewis, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused, Ms. Grant's excused, Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
President Shaki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is our purchasing agenda. Are there any discussion or questions regarding the purchasing agenda? Hearing none. May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused, Ms. Grant's excused, Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
President Shaki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda grouping. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused, Ms. Grant's excused, Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
President Shaki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The next item is just an update from me. Board members, my colleagues, I just want to invite you to join me on the first day of school, which is the 24th, Tuesday, to visit schools, to welcome our staff and our students back. I will be tagging along with Dr. Roby, and just want to give you the same opportunity to go visit a few of our schools and welcome everyone back to school. So if you would like to do so, just please reach out to Julie Anderson, and she'll work on coordinating schedules in schools. Okay. Any further public comment, Julie? None. Okay, very good. And we'll move on to Superintendent's comments.
We had the opportunity last week to welcome approximately 45 new teachers, and new teachers are always, have a special place in my heart, just the energy and the excitement, and even a little bit of trepidation of what is this going to be like. And so two-thirds of our teachers were brand-new to teaching, so there was a small group that were new to GRPS, but to have brand-new teachers entering our classrooms for the very first time, beginning their career, that's always, always very exciting. I want to also acknowledge that last month, we talked about our ESER plans and that we would share ESER updates. I have not forgotten. It's just with all of the activities that we've had in opening of school, we have delayed that, but I want to make sure that I reiterate, and I've asked to be held accountable for what our ESER plans are. That will be at a board meeting coming in September, and we plan on doing an overview report and a deep dive under how we will be using academics, as well as our SEL and mental health supports. So I want to make sure, again, that as we have promised our community that we'll make sure that we will do periodic reporting for that. We just were not able to do it at this board meeting, so I apologize to anybody who may have come to the meeting tonight expecting that report, but it will be forthcoming. That concludes my notes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Roby. We'll move on to board member comments. Ms. Davis, may I begin with you?
I don't have an organized comment, but the thing that kept popping up for me tonight was flexibility and adaptation, and I just kept tying it to the art of teaching and how teachers, that's what makes a wonderful teacher, is that they gather that data constantly and they see what their students' needs are, and then they adapt to the needs of each individual student. And I think that this past year, we've all, as a community, adults and children, have had to adapt. And the way that we model how we deal with change and adaptation, I think will grow, has a chance to grow wonderful adults out of our children. I see this at home. I know I haven't always been great at accepting change or being adaptable, but through this process, I think my kids have a chance to be better at that as adults. And so while there's been so many challenges, I think that our students have also an advantage because they are able to learn some things that maybe we wouldn't have learned without the challenge of COVID, so.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Baker?
I'm just thankful that we got here. No pun intended, but I am already breathing easier that we've put this decision behind us and are getting ready for the school year. So I'm looking forward to it, and thanks for the invitation to visit school that first day. It'll be great to actually see full buildings again, so I'll be there.
Wonderful. Thank you. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, I guess I'm really learning how to, in my day job, I work a lot with conflict resolution. And so it seems that in my older age, I don't mind confronting issues because the object is to find a solution, figure out a win-win situation. And so I hope that we continue to do that throughout this school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
I just would like to thank everyone who came out to share comments with us. We know that it's not always easy to get here to be with us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I guess I just want to recognize Mr. Franz again. Didn't really know him personally, but I do know that he seemed to really work tirelessly for peace and grace, I guess. I think it's really appropriate that that spirit is what began our meeting tonight, and I just prayerfully hope that as we all leave and continue to move forward, that we keep that sense of peacefulness about us, not just with this issue, but frankly, with all issues, and I guess any family or loved ones that Mr. Franz had unlikely that they're listening tonight, but I guess just be proud of him, and may your life continue to exhibit the things that he's still for.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I was honored to be invited to the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority installation of the book box out in front. Perhaps you noticed it, but they are putting these book boxes, and there are many already there, and these are especially for, they're either by people of color, about people of color. They encourage people to bring novels, nonfiction, kids' books. But I was very happy to be there and to know, one thing I really liked, and Dr. Roby was there, that many of these ladies were former schoolteachers at Grand Rapids Public. So they're there and trying to encourage all of us to donate some books.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Well, I, like so many of you, have two children who are about to start school in Grand Rapids Public Schools, and they are excited, mostly excited, to return to school. And so I just want to, at this final board meeting before we begin the school year, acknowledge our teachers, staff, administrative team, bus drivers, nutritional services, everyone, the entire team that makes the system work. It is an enormous effort, and I just want to express my gratitude as Board President. I cannot wait to see all of your kids this first day of school. I feel like I'm a cheerleader out there when I have the opportunity to see the first day because there's so much joy. And I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Let's bring grace into this year ahead. I know I will need it, and I will need to give it, and I just invite you to do the same. With that, this meeting is adjourned.